Call the order of the December 20th meeting of the City Council. Please rise for the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to the justice of all.
Call the vote, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Krikovic?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Knippel? And Mr. Sharp previously informed staff that he'd be unavailable for tonight's meeting.
Correction to approval. City Council minutes, December 6th. Is there a motion to approve as written?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Krikovic?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Correspondence, Doug, you want to start us?
Nothing to report from me.
I'll send very quiet for myself as well. Mike?
The only thing I had was a small conversation on item L, which won't be on... Yeah, thank you. I might need that. Which won't be on the agenda tonight anyway, so nothing really.
Diane?
Yeah, I did get a call from one of our residents wondering why the Christmas tree that we lit last year didn't get lit this year, the one over on the side of the old greenwood.
On the inside?
Yeah, and we had done that because we had gotten that letter from the middle school student, and nothing happened with it this year, and the person was concerned why it didn't get done, so.
Does that wrap it up? That was it?
For me?
Okay.
Yeah, that's it.
That's it. Questions or public comments? No one in the audience? We'll move on to City Manager's report. I know Steve's not here, but he had a couple items. Any discussion or questions on the...
Steve? I do have one more thing I forgot.
Oh, sure.
I just got it tonight.
Go ahead.
I received a thank you note from Alicia Lassell from the American Family Insurance Company, who is a member of the chamber, and it was a thank you note for helping get the new tree and the lights for the new tree in the park, and so I did want to acknowledge that.
All righty, thank you. City Managers, was there any questions on Steve's school choice and PD reports?
Unless Betsy has anything?
No, I didn't have anything.
Anything to add? No. Acceptance, we have the minutes from the ad hoc multi-use facility committee, October 25th, and the Public's Work Board from November 8th, 2016. Both of those will go on record as written. Council business will actually start with B. Resolution 1658, conditional use. Can we have that read, please?
Resolution 16-58, conditional use permit CPN Corporation, Federal Rent Defense, 621 East Lake Street. Whereas the City Council, the City of Lake Mills pursuant to the authority conferred by the Statute of the State of Wisconsin, has established certain standards and procedures for the use of land and zoning within the corporate limits of the City of Lake Mills. And whereas the City of Lake Mills Title 10 zoning code has certain requirements for conditional uses in zoning districts. And whereas the owner, CPN Corp., of subject site described in the application incorporated hearing by reference, has requested that a conditional use permit be granted to allow for outdoor storage in a general industrial district. And whereas the City Manager, Consultants, and City Staff have reviewed the application documents submitted and have made recommendations concerning approval of said amendment subject. And whereas a public hearing concerning the requested conditional use permit was conducted before the Plan Commission on December 20th, 2016, after due notice, to solicit testimony from the public. And whereas the Plan Commission has met and reviewed the evidence and testimony submitted thus far and has considered all of the available factual evidence concerning the requested action and recommended conditional approval to the City Council based on the following findings of fact. One, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of the proposed conditional use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. Two, the conditional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted or substantially diminish and impair property values within the neighborhood. Three, the establishment of the conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding properties for uses permitted in the district. Four, adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and/or necessary facilities will be provided. Five, adequate measures will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public street. Six, the conditional use shall in all respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located. Seven, the proposed conditional use... Its proposed location is in harmony with the purposes, goals, objectives, policies, and standards of the City of Lake Mills Comprehensive Plan. Eight, the potential public benefits of the proposed conditional use outweigh any and all potential adverse impacts of the proposed conditional use. Now therefore be resolved by the Lake Mills City Council on this 20th day of December 2016 if the requested conditional use permit may be granted if the following conditions are met. One, additional details on the required screen and landscaping must be submitted to the satisfaction of the building inspector prior to issuance of a permit. Two, maximum height of materials to be stored may not exceed the height of any fence screening, and the maximum height of any fence screening is eight feet. Three, access to the subject site from the parcel to the east must be restricted. Four, the conditional use will terminate when the petitioner is no longer using the site for outdoor storage. Five, fencing screening of the parking lot must be removed when the conditional use terminates or the area is no longer being used for outdoor storage. Six, a review of this conditional use will occur annually to ensure petitioner compliance.
And we have a motion to adopt 1658?
So moved.
And a second? In fact, I'll second. Discussion on this one? Mike, you want to...
So, yeah, we just went through this in the meeting right before this for conditional use, and basically this is to allow a lessee to use some outdoor space, which was actually thought to have been a parking lot previously, but turns out it's part of that building that was tore down. They're looking for a place to do some outside storage so they can actually move their vehicles or trucks inside during the winter. They're expecting this to last no more than two years, but inside our conditional use we were asking them to allow inspections once a year to make sure things are doing what they're supposed to. And you can see the picture up there. The blue area is pretty much where the storage would be, and there's some... A few issues with that area. There is some screening already in front of it. There's already a partial wall in front of it. And, you know, we could have talked about having them build on that wall, but then there would be that extra space inside there that they couldn't use as a part of the setback because there's a 50-foot requirement setback there. So basically, the Plan Commission said what is the blue area there is what we're allowing them to... We would allow them to use for outdoor storage based on a conditional use.
So they're fencing in a fenced-in area?
They're fencing in fencing. They want to store fencing, outdoor fencing there.
Okay.
So they're going to fence it in and screen it, and there's also some... There's already some landscaping there, so I'm not sure what else will be required in that, but according to the plan, they'll be required to have that covered, or I'm sorry, fenced in, protected from view, so people can't see it, and it doesn't put a bad...
It's not an eyesore.
Yeah, exactly.
And that's asphalt, correct?
There you go. That's asphalt there.
That's why they want to use it.
Because right now their stuff is currently stored in dirt.
Right.
In a mud field area, so we just had one dissenting voter, but it passed four to one from the Plan Commission.
What type of... Can I ask what type of fencing they're planning on using?
To fence it in?
Yeah.
They're talking about the regular chain link fence with the screen slats.
Slats in it so you can't see through it. And then anything to add? I mean, as long as you're sticking around, or...
I guess I'd say that Mike kind of nailed it. You know, the code allows for this type of use. There's just certain restrictions in the code that say it needs to be eight feet from property lines. It needs to be screened in in some manner. It could be a wall. It doesn't have to be a fence, but as Mike indicated, they're indicated they're looking to use a fence with slats. And then because it's facing the public right of way, East Lake Street, it needs to be screened. So that was the recommendation given. Generally, this area wasn't designed for that outdoor storage, but it's permissible with those conditions.
Any ideas in short term to it? Just two years is what we're looking at?
Yeah, talking with the owner of the property, they had been told two years that they would need the use of that.
Okay.
So they're looking to rent it, right?
Yes. They're already renting some of it, but this will allow some more income for that property owner.
A question was... Sorry?
Well, I was just going to say, I didn't... The resolution does not have a time limit in it, does it?
No.
Should we put one on so that it's clear? Because otherwise, in two years, many of us may not be here, and, you know, and it's like, whoever said that? You know? I think it would be good to have that.
Well, didn't it say... It does say every year they got to come back.
Every year they have to come back and have it redone, and we can terminate it. It's just that they mentioned two years as a time limit.
And I know it wasn't in there, but it was. The resolution does call them back every year.
Yes.
It says here that it will terminate when the petitioner is no longer using the site for outdoor storage. So that means the future is indeterminate.
That way they don't have to come back in two years to redo it if they are there. But we could also... We, as the city, could say we no longer want that anymore.
Yeah, no.
So both parties have options.
Is that... To vice, or do you want to...
Well, I would like the minutes to show that. Our minutes of a meeting, that that is the intent.
The intent is a two-year...
Right, well, we know that they have to come back every year by them on their own, right? They have to schedule that? Or do we have to...
Probably somebody should put it on their calendar to remember it.
Yeah.
That's the danger of periodic reviews. It gets lost in the shuffle. So somebody should be tracking that.
So can we make that a requirement of the... I'm assuming it's the building inspector that does that?
You could.
So the condition could be that...
When he does... He had the annual review.
Yeah.
It comes back here.
Here or to the Planning Commission?
Where.
It would end up coming back to both if you're going to reopen the conditional use.
But we wouldn't have to if nobody cares and it's fine. We could give them another two years. And that the Planning Commission could do themselves, couldn't they?
They could give them another year.
Another year.
Because it's an annual review. There was a question raised at the Plan Commission as to who gets to determine whether the fencing and screening and landscaping are adequate. And actually, number one answers that, that it's to the satisfaction of the building inspector. So he's the final decider on that, and so it would make sense to also have him be the person that's got to trigger the annual review to the Plan Commission. And it doesn't have to be a full conditional use permit process again, but if there's an issue that the Plan Commission has a problem with, that would certainly be the time to have that addressed. And if the conditional use permit needs to be modified, however, then the process would have to be commenced over again. There would have to be the hearing at the Plan Commission, a recommendation to the council, and then a final council decision. So it's possible it could come back to you on one of these annual reviews, but I suspect that if there aren't any problems, it can just be handled at the Plan Commission, and they can go back about their business.
And want to suggest some language to amend it?
I don't think you have to. That's just how it's going to work in reality. If you want to amend it to make it crystal clear that that's how it's got to be, you can go ahead and do it, but in custom and practice and how our code is structured, it's going to happen that way.
So he would... The inspector would report back to the Planning Commission?
Oh, in that respect, amend it. Yeah, you will probably want to put a number seven in there, or you could work it into your number six. A review of this conditional use will occur annually to ensure petitioner compliance. Such review will be initiated by the building inspector, and that should cover it.
I move that, what you have just said.
Okay.
It'll second. So any discussion on his amendment?
No.
No?
I think it's a good amendment.
All right, motion second. Call the vote, please.
It's just for the amendment, right?
Just for the amendment.
Okay.
Mr. Krikovic?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Six is no, but amended to, I guess, more clearly state next year. Further discussion, issues? Diane, anything? All right.
Can I just ask, Mrs. Fritsch, was there something else you wanted reflected in the minutes besides the amendment that's to the motion?
If Mrs. Schmidt could say what her amendment was, because I'm not sure if it... Could you... Somebody tell me what we just amended?
And such review shall be initiated by the building inspector would be tacked down to point number six.
Yeah, I think it covers it because it says occur annually. So it's there, so I don't need what I thought I needed. I hadn't caught that in there.
So we're good? Any more questions? All right, and then call the vote on the resolution, please.
Did we do the amendment?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I missed that one. Went right by me.
You've already guessed.
Well, yeah, good. It's just busy thinking.
So on the motion as amended, Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Krikovic?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
So 1658, all right. Resolution 1657, DOT clarification. Can we have that read, please?
Resolution 16-57, delegation of approval authority for functional classification and boundary changes in urban areas. Whereas a comprehensive functional classification system and boundary review is conducted across the state of Wisconsin after the decennial census update. And whereas the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, Bureau of Planning and Economic Development, and Division of Transportation Systems Development conducts a functional classification and boundary review with the corporation of municipal stakeholders. And whereas municipal stakeholders provides a qualified individual to review proposed functional classification and boundary changes. And whereas in accordance with federal regulations set forth by the Federal Highway Administration under 23 CFR Section 470.103 and 470.105, proposed changes to the functional classification system need to be approved by a city council. Now therefore be it resolved, the Lake Mills City Council is responsible for approving proposed functional classification and boundary changes. And be it further resolved, the city council may delegate approval authority for functional classification and boundaries to a qualified individual by position title. And be it further resolved, the city council delegates the functional classification and boundary approval authority to the city manager. And be it further resolved, the delegation of the functional classification and boundary approval authority to the individual possessing the job title of city manager must be adopted by the city council. And be it further resolved, after approval of a change to functional classification and boundary by delegate, the approver must notify the city council of the approved change, and the council's acknowledgement of the change must be reflected in the meeting minutes. And be it further resolved, once a functional classification and boundary change proposal has been sent to the municipal stakeholder for review and discussion, the reviewer must abide by the timeframes for review of functional classification and boundary changes policy.
Thanks. And then before... Well, someone wants to make a motion. You want a Vicky's memo? You want to discuss that first, or...
Well, we'd have to take it off the table before we can do it.
Well, that's right. Right now it's currently table. We got a motion to...
But... If we decide we don't want to do anything, we don't have to take it on the table. It would die. I guess, like the last one, I'm not really clear here. Is this resolution what we want, or...
I think this is the same one, same exact one.
This is the original one.
It's the same one with... Yeah, and we've got some...
And if you want to discuss it, you have to remove it from the table. But doesn't mean you have to adopt it.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to remove it from the table so we can discuss it.
Okay, in a second.
I'll second it.
All right, call the vote, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Krikovic?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
So now we can discuss it, and...
Okay. So can I ask council to tell us what you found out since their last meeting about this?
Yeah, in fact, if you want, you want to explain? I read your update, and it almost looks like we could say no, and it would still come back to us. It's still a 60-day period. We could say yes, and Steve could still bring them forward to us or deal with them.
But it also sounds like if we said no and we left it, the city council as the authority, if we tell the DOT that we are working on it, they grant an extra... Can grant an extra 60 days, so we could have 128 days in this.
Instead of...
Yeah, they'll give you extra time if they know you're working on it, especially if you're working on it at the council level as opposed to that you've got one designated delegated person to make the decision. Essentially, what I was able to glean from speaking with the gentleman from DOT and reading their policies, the DOT had been making these determinations by just working with an engineering consultant from the municipality or public works director or whatever, but not the elected officials. And they were getting these decisions made probably fairly efficiently, but it wasn't involving the actual governing body. And the feds have a requirement that the council has to be involved in some way, shape, or form. So it looked to me as though DOT was saying, okay, sort of as a middle ground, would it be all right if we had the governing body take action to delegate their authority for making the decision to some particular named individual, and then so that the feds are assured that at least the governing body is aware of what's happening? It can be reflected in one of their meeting minutes that, yes, we were told about this, but the decision's going to be made by the person you delegate the decision-making authority to. You just are being informed of the decision. But I asked him straight out, can the council decide they don't want to delegate the authority and they want to make the decision there themselves, probably with hearing from the consulting engineer and hearing from the city manager, but actually making the decision? And he said, oh, yeah, that can happen too. So you're not compelled to adopt the resolution, but if you would rather not have to deal with it and give it to the city manager, you could do that. And then he would be required within that 60 days to come and tell you about it, and it would show up in your minutes that that was the decision that he made on your behalf, and he told you about it.
So is this time sensitive, these decisions?
They give you 60 days automatically, and like he said, if the DOT knows that you're working on coming up with an answer, just don't have one yet, they'll give you additional time.
The reason I ask that is because I got the sense last meeting that if we had one person like Steve do it, it might be more efficient.
Oh, it would definitely be more efficient. You could get a decision probably quicker than 60 days, but...
Leaves us out.
Yeah, so it's totally within your discretion whether you want to grapple with the details and make the decision as a group, or if you want to delegate it to the city manager to do it for you.
I would think the community would want us to handle it. So that's just my two cents worth.
That's my two cents worth, too.
I know I found it ironic. The DOT wants to, you know, speed things up and be more organized, but they started with an outside entity. It's not like internal. They want us, and they want to take it, but that's beside the point.
It's a little ironic.
Just a little bit, that they would go and not, you know, housekeep themselves, but...
Yes. Easier to tell somebody else what to do than to take care of it yourself.
So you... I mean, if I understand this right, we can say no. We can actually get extra time by having it come here, and it almost sounds like there may be a consensus. More questions, or does...
And we'd have 128 days, so that's a significant part of it.
Now, we could in the future adopt this, correct?
Probably.
We could say no today and next year go, you know what, really? And I assume this came up because of one issue somewhere. I mean, it's not the majority of issues that they're saying, we need to speed this up.
Yeah, my sense was this is being driven by the federal government. They're saying, hey, DOT, although what you were doing was probably perfectly fine, you really can't make someone other than the governing body make the decision unless the governing body has delegated that authority to that person.
Well, given the state of the federal government at this time...
Yeah, who knows what they'll want.
Yeah, I would say, why would we do this now when it might all get turned over possibly in some shape and form? I would rather have it where it comes to the council, just so that we know what's going on. I think that's our job, and I think we should do it that way.
So...
So that would be a no vote.
So would you like to make a motion to reject Resolution 1657?
Yes, I'll make a motion to reject.
And then a second?
I'll second it.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Krikovic?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion to reject passed four zero.
All right, and we did do that, right? I know I've done the wording wrong before, and we... Never mind.
It's close enough?
Yeah.
Close enough.
Reject is good. Housekeeping. Resolution 1659, we have that read, please?
Resolution 16-59, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to transfer funds, cemetery roads. Whereas the City of Lake Mills City Council adopted the 2016 capital budget by ordinance 1155. And whereas the adopted 2016 capital budget may only be amended by vote of the city council as provided for under Section 65.90 sub 5 sub A of Wisconsin statutes. And whereas the treasurer finance director has requested that the 2016 capital budget be amended by transferring funds from capital cemetery roads to local government investment pool account number 15. Whereas the treasurer finance director requests to have these funds available for the completion of cemetery road improvements in 2017. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council, the City of Lake Mills, the annual capital budget of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin for the calendar year beginning January 1, 2016, is hereby amended to transfer remaining funds from the project to LGIP number 15 to be used for completion of the project in 2017. Be it further resolved, that the city clerk is hereby directed to give required notice to the public in accordance with Section 65.90 sub 5 sub A of Wisconsin statutes by publishing said adopted resolution. Be it further resolved, that the city council is hereby authorized the council president to sign this resolution.
And a motion to adopt Resolution 1659?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Sorry.
Further questions, or Betsy in?
This is an item to reserve the funds that hadn't been spent yet this year on the project so we can complete it next year.
It's already been started, right?
Right, it's already been started. There's just some items that hadn't been completed, having to do with the base course and the final lane of the asphalt and...
Practically how much of the item is been spent?
Well, the information I have is that we will probably be reserving in the $8,000 area to do completion of the project. That's about how much we'll have left to transfer over for next year.
So I guess my question, not trying to get in your business, I'm just trying to understand, when we move this or these funds over to the investment pool, how do we track those separately inside there to make sure they're used for the correct...
You're noticing that I'm sending all of the reserve funds to the same LGIP account, and I'll just do that on a spreadsheet. So every month I'll be reallocating the interest so that each item, each, you know, like the cemetery, will have its balance plus the interest. And I do that on a couple other accounts, just keep them segregate, segregated by a spreadsheet so that I can allocate the interest and know how much is left in each fund.
Okay. So all the housekeeping stuff will be in one fund and you'll, you actually just keep track of?
Right, right, as we expended, I'll subtract it off my list and, yeah, it'll, it'll be tracked separately.
Thanks.
I have a question. Will these funds be used first, then before the budgeted funds that we've put in the budget for seventeen?
Right, when we're, when we're completing the twenty-seven, the cemetery in two thousand seventeen, they're going to be using these funds first and then hopefully that we won't need any more, but we'll have to deal with that if something should occur, but that is the plan.
Yeah, and I mean, if, if something comes up in two thousand seventeen, we'll have to look at that. But these funds will be used before we go into the cemetery funds for two thousand seventeen?
Exactly, exactly. And by the nature of the funds that I've borrowed for these projects, I need to be using them specifically for the purpose that they were borrowed and within three years of the, of the borrowing. So it's important that we expend them as we told the bondholders we're going to expend them in the time limit we've promised.
Okay.
Any further? Motion, call the vote, please?
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Resolution sixteen sixty, can we have that read, please?
Resolution sixteen dash sixty, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer finance director to transfer funds for fire department budget. Whereas the City of Lake Mills City Council adopted the two thousand sixteen general government budget by ordinance eleven fifty-four. Whereas the adopted two thousand sixteen general government budget may only be amended by vote of city councils provided for under section sixty-five point nine zero sub five sub A of Wisconsin statutes. And whereas the city treasurer has requested that the two thousand sixteen general government budget be amended by transferring funds from fire department drills, calls, standby to fire department retirement and fire department inspector, janitor, intern. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council, the City of Lake Mills, the general government budget of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin for the calendar year beginning January one, two thousand sixteen is hereby amended as follows. General fund, fire department drills, calls, standby, adopted, one hundred forty-six thousand two hundred, amended, one hundred five thousand seven hundred. Fire department retirement, adopted, six thousand six hundred, amended, thirty-seven thousand six hundred. Fire department inspector, janitor, intern, adopted, sixty-four thousand four hundred, amended, seventy-three thousand nine hundred. Total adopted, two hundred seventeen thousand two hundred, total amended, two hundred seventeen thousand two hundred. Be it further resolved that the city clerk is hereby directed to give required notice to the public in accordance with section sixty-five point nine zero sub five sub A of Wisconsin statutes by publishing said adopted resolution. Be it further resolved that the city council is hereby authorized the council president to sign this resolution.
And we have a motion to adopt sixteen sixty?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
And then Betsy, what exactly is this happened here?
Yes, the majority of the funds that I need to have transferred to cover the retirement has to do with an error that was caught earlier in the year in a employee's retirement account. So the state did a calculation on how much we would need to put into his fund in order to make his fund what it would have been had the error not occurred. And so we have that amount, plus there's some unexpected costs in the retirement and the, the payroll having to do with how the different jobs had changed, having the janitor and then intern. So we needed to have funds available to cover those line items. So we're taking those out of the drills, calls, and standby. The fire chief felt that that was going to be sufficient, the amount that was left in there to cover any payrolls that were coming up yet.
And everything's, would be corrected after this?
Yes, it should be. That's the anticipation, that it'll all be made whole, that that employee will be made whole on his retirement account.
So seeing that there was an issue with it this year, is there going to be something coming up to modify the budget for two thousand seventeen?
Well, this, this was an error that has to do with the funds that we're paying to the state for that employee's fund. And so they've gone back through, through the course of his employment and made the calculation of what we need to do to make this right.
So this wasn't specific just for this year, this was?
Right, it's going back in history. Now he's, it's been corrected, now we've funded his account so that it's made right and we'll move forward in the proper manner.
Okay, thank you.
So in other words, as you were saying, the budget we passed for two thousand seventeen had the correction made in it already?
Yes.
Okay, so we're just fixing what we...
Right, right, this, this employee is a long-term employee, we're going back a lot of years.
Okay. Anything else? Call the vote, please?
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Resolution sixteen sixty-one, Wallace Park, can we have that one read, please?
Resolution sixteen dash sixty-one, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to transfer funds, Wallace Park, whereas the City of Lake Mills City Council adopted the two thousand sixteen capital budget by ordinance eleven fifty-five. And whereas the adopted two thousand sixteen capital budget may only be amended by vote of the city councils provided for under section sixty-five point nine zero sub five sub A of Wisconsin statutes. And whereas the treasurer finance director has requested that the two thousand sixteen capital budget be amended by transferring funds from capital Wallace Park to local government investment pool account number fifteen. Whereas the treasurer finance director requests to have these funds available for the completion of Wallace Park improvements in two thousand seventeen. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council, the City of Lake Mills, the annual capital budget of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin for the calendar year beginning January one, two thousand sixteen is hereby amended to transfer remaining funds from capital Wallace Park to LGIP number fifteen to be used for completion of the project in two thousand seventeen. Be it further resolved that the city clerk is hereby directed to give required notice to the public in accordance with section sixty-five point nine zero sub five sub A of Wisconsin statutes by publishing said adopted resolution. Be it further resolved that the city council is hereby authorized the council president to sign this resolution.
All right, and a motion to adopt sixteen sixty-one?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any further questions or anything?
This would be similar to the cemetery.
Correct, correct, the project isn't quite complete and we would like to transfer the funds to that LGIP account to reserve them to for seventeen.
These funds weren't part of a bond?
Yeah, they, they were borrowed in funds as well, but...
So just a quick question, just because I'm trying to understand it. So I see you have two options in there, either pass it or don't pass it. If we didn't pass it, what, what happens?
What effect would that have?
Yeah.
Well, we're in the middle of the project, we've already said that we're going to be doing this project. So if you don't pass it, then I'm not going to move those funds over there. It's, it's just going to have to be completed with the monies that are available. So it's, it's going to have to happen, but this makes it clean and clear to have this resolution done.
Okay, now I was just trying to get, get a feeling for what happens in that instance with funds that are part of bonds, things like that, if, if we would have said no and...
Well, that's where you lose track of them, because you're keeping track of all the leftover money from this year so that it's there next year.
Right.
But if we say no at some point, then it goes into a different area and you kind of start to muddle what you're doing.
This'll make it very clear, it'll, it'll let everybody know what we're doing and why we're doing it.
And they wouldn't, they wouldn't necessarily lose those funds?
No, no, we're not going to do that.
She would still have to move them somewhere and save them for next year.
Okay.
So if it sits there and we don't move them if we didn't vote this?
Well, it gets moved into the fund balance through the accounting, but we still have to have those, those dollars available to spend. So it, it would make it complicated.
You don't like complicated?
Let's not do that.
Okay.
Well, I think it's important for the public and everybody to know that we're watching where the money goes.
I think part of our rating is because we, that our money's taken care of, you know where it is, anybody can come in and look through and it's all accounted for and it's neat and orderly and so that's, that's part of it.
We have our audit every year.
I'd like to compliment Betsy for being conscientious and doing all these wonderful resolutions just so we do have a paper trail of where the money went.
Right, right, thank you.
All right. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Call the vote, please?
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
And Resolution sixteen sixty-two, Mulberry Street Engineering, can we have that read, please?
Resolution sixteen dash sixty-two, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to transfer funds, Mulberry Street Engineering, whereas the City of Lake Mills City Council adopted the two thousand sixteen capital budget by ordinance eleven fifty-five. And whereas the adopted two thousand sixteen capital budget may only be amended by vote of the city councils provided for under section sixty-five point nine zero sub five sub A of Wisconsin statutes. And whereas treasurer finance director has requested that the two thousand sixteen capital budget be amended by transferring funds from unreserved fund balance to Streets Capitol Mulberry Street. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council, the City of Lake Mills, the annual capital budget of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin for the calendar year beginning January one, two thousand sixteen is hereby amended as follows. General fund, unreserved fund balance, adopted, two million four hundred thousand, amended, two million three hundred thirty-three thousand. Capital fund expenditures, Streets Mulberry Street, adopted, twenty-five thousand, amended, ninety-two thousand. For a total adopted, two million four hundred twenty-five thousand, total amended, two million four hundred twenty-five thousand. Be it further resolved that the city clerk is hereby directed to give required notice to the public in accordance with section sixty-five point nine zero sub five sub A of Wisconsin statutes by publishing said adopted resolution. Be it further resolved that the city council is hereby authorized the council president to sign this resolution.
And a motion to adopt Resolution sixteen sixty-two?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions or anything?
Those are just unexpected costs for...
Right, right, the city manager and his budget tried to estimate what these costs could be and you know that was a year and a half ago. And so we're just asking the, the council if we could use fund balance until we do our borrowing next year and then we'll replenish the fund balance.
Anything else? Call the vote, please?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
And sixteen sixty-three, dam rehabilitation, we have that read, please?
Resolution sixteen dash sixty-three, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to transfer funds, dam rehabilitation, whereas the City of Lake Mills City Council adopted the two thousand sixteen capital budget by ordinance eleven fifty-five. And whereas the adopted two thousand sixteen capital budget may only be amended by vote of the city council as provided for under section sixty-five point nine zero sub five sub A of Wisconsin statutes. And whereas the treasurer has requested that the two thousand sixteen capital budget be amended by transferring funds from capital dam rehabilitation to local government investment pool account number fifteen. Whereas the treasurer requests to have these funds available for the completion of the dam rehabilitation project in two thousand seventeen. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council, the City of Lake Mills, the annual capital budget of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin for the calendar year beginning January one, two thousand sixteen is hereby amended to transfer remaining funds from capital dam rehabilitation to LGIP number fifteen to be used for completion of the project in two thousand seventeen. Be it further resolved that the city clerk is hereby directed to give required notice to the public in accordance with section sixty-five point nine zero sub five sub A of Wisconsin statutes by publishing said adopted resolution. Be it further resolved that the city council is hereby authorized the council president to sign this resolution.
And a motion to adopt sixteen sixty-three?
So moved.
Well, second?
Second.
All right, and...
What we're, what we're doing here is the borrowed funds, we had borrowed three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, three hundred and fifty thousand in two thousand fifteen and thirty thousand in two thousand sixteen. Those funds have been expended. But what's happening next is we're receiving, and I haven't received it yet, grant money. The state has allowed up to four hundred thousand dollars in grant dollars for this project and we have not received that yet and I will not have spent all of it yet this year. There are still a few items that have not been completed in the project and, you know, it's specifically those retainage that needs to be paid. There's some fencing that still hasn't been put up, there's, there's some items that are not done yet. And so I want to make sure that it's clear that the bond dollars that we're going, the, excuse me, the grant dollars that we're going to be receiving, I want to use and retain for two thousand seventeen.
And the grant is, it's gone through?
Right.
We haven't seen, just haven't seen a check?
Right, I've submitted the payout request and the first payout request is two hundred thousand dollars. I have not received that yet and I'd submitted the request earlier.
Anything else? Call the vote, please?
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
And sixteen sixty-four, Storm Sewer, have that read, please?
Resolution sixteen dash sixty-four, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to transfer funds, street rebuild and storm sewer, whereas the City of Lake Mills City Council adopted the two thousand sixteen capital budget by ordinance eleven fifty-five. And whereas the adopted two thousand sixteen capital budget may only be amended by vote of the city councils provided for under section sixty-five point nine zero sub five sub A of Wisconsin statutes. And whereas the treasurer has requested that the two thousand sixteen capital budget be amended by transferring funds from capital, street rebuild, and storm sewer to local government investment pool account number fifteen. Whereas the treasurer requests to have these funds available for the completion of the street rebuild and storm sewer projects that will be completed in two thousand seventeen. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council, the City of Lake Mills, the annual capital budget of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin for the calendar year beginning January one, two thousand sixteen is hereby amended to transfer remaining funds from capital, street rebuild, and storm sewer to LGIP number fifteen to be used for completion of the project in two thousand seventeen. Be it further resolved that the city clerk is hereby directed to give required notice to the public in accordance with section sixty-five point nine zero sub five sub A of Wisconsin statutes by publishing said adopted resolution. Be it further resolved that the city council is hereby authorized the council president to sign this resolution.
And a motion to adopt sixteen sixty-four?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
And...
The biggest part of the dollars that we have in those budget lines are for Eastlake Park Place. And the city manager's already discussed in previous meetings what's happening at Eastlake Park Place and we know that it is not going to be complete this year. We're not sure to the, the final dollar amount of what is going to be left and available to transfer. So as those costs come in, I will make sure that anything that's remaining is going to be put into the LGIP fifteen to be used in the two thousand seventeen when we complete that project.
Okay. Anything else on that one? Call the vote, please?
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
And sixteen sixty-five, garbage refuse recycling pickup?
Resolution sixteen dash sixty-five, establishing garbage refuse and recyclable pickup and disposal fees pursuant to section four dash three dash three of the City of Lake Mills Municipal Code. Whereas the city council, the City of Lake Mills, may establish the monthly fee for garbage recycling collection per City of Lake Mills Municipal Code four dash three dash two one dash A. Whereas John's disposal is provided the required rate change notification as specified in the agreement. This notification advised that there will be no rate increase in two thousand seventeen. Whereas the State of Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources will provide a grant to be used to offset a portion of the cost of recycling. Now therefore be it resolved that the charge of twelve dollars per unit per month shall apply to all private residences, commercial, industrial, institutional, and/or agricultural collection points in the City of Lake Mills. Be it further resolved that this charge shall be effective upon publication in an official newspaper as required by the municipal code and effective January one, two thousand seventeen, and the council president is authorized to sign the resolution.
A motion to adopt sixteen sixty-five?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, any...
This drops it by seventy-one cents a...
Per month, per...
Per household.
Mm-hmm, right.
That doesn't happen often.
I know.
So... Any other questions? Call the vote, please?
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
We just have really good garbage in Lake Mills, that's why.
They're making money on the, on the recycling.
By the way, I would like to comment that in the letter that they sent to the city, if I can pull this up here, it says they are pleased to report, no, that's not what I wanted, that the program was going very well for us with no trouble and very few calls from your residents. So I'm happy to hear that evidently things are going all right, but we're also not, we don't have a lot of people whining and complaining and making problems. And I think that's partly why this went down, because we're not costing them a lot of money trying to please people for minute things. So thank you to the citizens for that.
All right, and Resolution sixteen sixty-six, Highway eighty-nine, Main Street Engineering, we have that read, please?
Resolution sixteen dash sixty-six, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to transfer funds, Highway eighty-nine, South Main Street Engineering. Whereas the City of Lake Mills City Council adopted the two thousand sixteen capital budget by ordinance eleven fifty-five. And whereas the adopted two thousand sixteen capital budget may only be amended by vote of the city councils provided for under section sixty-five point nine zero sub five sub A of Wisconsin statutes. And whereas the treasurer has requested that the two thousand sixteen capital budget be amended by transferring funds from unreserved fund balance to Streets Capitol, Highway eighty-nine, South Main Street. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council, the City of Lake Mills, the annual capital budget of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin for the calendar year beginning January one, two thousand sixteen is hereby amended as follows. General fund, unreserved fund balance, adopted, two million four hundred thousand, amended, two million three hundred eighty thousand. Capital fund expenditures, Streets, Highway eighty-nine, South Main Street, adopted, fifty thousand, amended, seventy thousand. Total Adopted, two million four hundred fifty thousand, total amended, two million four hundred fifty thousand. Be it further resolved, the city clerk is hereby directed to give required notice to the public in accordance with section sixty-five point nine zero sub five sub A of Wisconsin statutes by publishing said adopted resolution. Be it further resolved, the city council is hereby authorized, council president, to sign this resolution.
And a motion to adopt sixteen sixty-six?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
This, this one's a little bit different. Um, right now I have funds available, however, the state has not provided all of their billing to us yet, and I'm asking for the availability of fund balance dollars in case the state bill comes in higher than what I have available left for funding. So I have eleven thousand sitting in the account now, but the state has billed us more than that in previous in the year. So this is just in preparation so that there is the available funding, and again, this is a situation where I would borrow next year to replenish the, the fund balance for these costs.
Well, I guess the question I have is, we already passed one.
From Mulberry?
From Mulberry.
Right.
And the numbers are exactly the same, so we'll-
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah.
It's, it's because I'm not sure how much I'm exactly gonna be using out of each one. I don't want to take out more than I'll actually be spending. So if you want a tally of how much it's going to be in total, it's just, you know, the placement of the, the items in the agenda could get kind of confusing too, and so, yes.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, because they both have the same starting-
Right, it was. It was how much it was started, and then I'm not doing a graduation of the different amounts that I'm requesting. You're right.
So I don't know how we should do that, because it sort of gives a, I don't know, I don't want to say false picture, but it, it is something that, whereas if we, if we pass the first one, then we're actually down to two million three hundred, and then the next one will drop us even lower. I, I'm just not, I guess I'm kind of looking at Vicky, should we do something with that, or, I don't know if-
Because we would have to go real time, as we, as we pass one, they would change.
Yeah, and then, just because it occurred twice in the same-
It would be my, my making the assumption that you were going to be passing the first one and then putting those numbers in there that way, so I didn't do it that way.
You could probably, now that you know that you passed the first one, you could amend the numbers in the second one, so that in real time, they, they track with one another.
I think that's a good idea. Can somebody figure out what those numbers should be?
Hopefully, Betsy can.
Yeah, I mean, did you need that right now, or we're just, okay?
Sorry.
Well, no, I think it's important.
It is, it is.
You know, it's, it's, it's the exact-
I understand why it's written the way it is, but-
Yeah.
And I understand that too, but now that we know that the other money has been designated, that leaves X amount for this one.
So then, do we have to read that?
Yeah, I don't think we have to, because it's-
No.
So that means that this adopted number becomes two, three, three, three?
I think we should mention that it gets-
Two million three, and then, um, amending it to two, three, one, three.
That's what I would do.
Two, three, one, three.
Yeah, and you guys can, you can put a date on it.
Can I just ask Vicky? Do we have to do an amendment, or can we just do the correction and then use it as the original resolution?
I believe it's already been read, so now you would probably have to amend it.
Okay, so we do have to amend it, because we read it the way it is. Okay, that's why.
Now we got a motion to amend it.
Just double-check that, and then?
Yep.
Well, it's nice, it's nice to see that in government today, where people are being too efficient. Yes. Let's move from that.
I think that's what they're looking for.
So after the Mulberry Street resolution, that would change the figures in resolution sixteen sixty-six if you were to make a motion to amend it, and it would be General Fund, Unreserved Fund Balance, Unreserved Fund Balance, adopted would be two million three hundred thirty-three thousand, amended, two million three hundred thirteen thousand. Capital Fund Expenditures, Streets, Highway eighty-nine, South Main Street, would still be adopted, fifty thousand, amended, seventy thousand, for a total adopted of two million three hundred eighty-three thousand, total amended, two million three hundred eighty-three thousand.
So moved.
So you're making the motion?
I'll make the motion to amend.
Making the second?
I'll second it.
Any other, all right, call the vote on the amendment, please?
One moment.
And you wrote that all down, right?
Yes.
Okay, we're good.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kirkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero on the amendment.
Okay, so any further questions on the?
So for my clarification, would you read the numbers one more time now, the adopted and amended and adopted and amended and total? Could you read those one more time?
Sure. The General Fund, the Unreserved Fund Balance, adopted, two million three hundred thirty-three thousand. Amended, two million three hundred thirteen thousand, which makes the totals at the bottom, adopted, two million three hundred eighty-three thousand, amended, two million three hundred eighty-three thousand.
Ah, okay, got it. Thank you for doing that.
Anything else? And call the vote on the amended resolution, please?
Mr. Kirkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
And ordinance eleven seventy-four, elementary school parking zone stop signs will move to the third reading. In ordinance eleven seventy-five, Vicky did not make it out of plan commission. Do we need to just move that to a future agenda? Because there's no date on when they're gonna be finished.
Yeah, you could, you could move it to a future agenda. Um, since it hasn't been read, there's nothing to, to table.
Well, that's what I'm asking. It hasn't been read, it didn't make it out of planning, and they don't have a date yet. They're still looking at-
And we don't know that it's actually in final form gonna be what you've got in front of you. I suspect it could be amended.
So, can we legally just scratch it and have it come back and?
You could scratch it and have it come back, because if they end up changing anything about that ordinance, it's not gonna be the same ordinance. Right.
So we need a motion to-
So what, yeah, what kind of motion do we need?
Table it? Well, if you table it, it stays the same.
Yep, but if we table it, and we never take it off the table, it's dead.
Right.
And we wouldn't take this one off the table, so it is a way of killing it.
Yeah.
Well, if you table it, and in the future it comes back in a completely different form?
Then it doesn't matter.
Then you just ignore this one and go to the new one?
Yeah.
Would you like to do that? You want to table it?
I'll move to table it indefinitely.
I'll second it.
Second? Any others? Call the vote, please?
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kirkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
All right, so that one's done.
That one's out in la-la land somewhere now.
Uh, recommendation for future agendas?
Yeah, I was thinking about the East Lake Park Place, and is that behind, that's actually behind schedule, isn't it?
Yeah, they ran into problems.
There were those issues that, yeah, the city manager had talked to the council about it at a previous meeting about the drainage issues.
Yeah.
And because of that, the final layer of the, of the pavement wasn't to put on, and they're waiting until next year to complete that.
The only reason I bring it up, because I'm, my understanding, there's a lot of, well, at least one house up there that had their mail disrupted for like two, three months, where the post office wouldn't even deliver to them. Are we gonna run in, yeah. Are we gonna run into any of that issue during the winter? Should we?
I'm, I'm not sure where the, where that residence is located, but as far as I could see, that road is open now, and that they should be having services they've had in the past.
Okay, maybe we don't need to talk about it then.
It may occur again next year.
It may, yeah.
Depending on where they're located and-
But that is something that happens frequently when your road is being ripped up, that, you know, that you have to get your mail at the mail, mail at the post office.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just curious if this was an oversight on the engineer's part, or do we even, I don't remember talking much about it.
Maybe, were you not at the meeting?
Maybe, that's all I can think.
You might have missed the meeting, that Steve brought that up, because he was saying how they ran into problems with water, right?
Right, the drainage in the-
The drainage didn't work the way, something didn't work the way they expected it to.
I must have.
So they needed, they needed the surface underneath the road to dry out, and it just didn't happen in time. They put tiles in to try to speed up the, the drainage.
And did that add cost overruns for us?
Well, that's where some of this is not all fleshed out yet.
Okay.
But maybe you could talk to Steve when he gets back, and then if you still want it on the agenda, you can put it on the agenda after you've gotten the information.
Yeah, 'cause I, I did have a couple of questions about that that came to me, and I didn't have an answer for it, so I didn't, I don't remember talking about it. The other thing that was sort of niggling in my, back of my brain was electronics recycling and things like that, and reading about how the state helps support communities that provide electronics, recycling, things along that line. I don't know if we want to even look down that road as a community to do anything, because I know it's, it can be expensive, it can be messy, but right now, the citizens here really don't have many options except to drive somewhere and pay.
Yeah, and as someone who just went through that, my son left me, I said computers, and I was looking to, it was, it was a pain to try to figure out where to go with them and what to do with them.
Isn't there county pain? Well, there was, and it was in Watertown, and it was countywide you could do it, but now it's down to city only.
Yep, it's a locked fence. You gotta have a, a city pass to get in.
So there's really no great avenue for any of our citizens in Lake Mills to get rid of electronics recycling, so I don't know if that's something we may want to put on.
Well, and as we talked about our garbage recycling, I mean, I called, I ended up calling, and you set up a day, and I told them what I had, they give you a price, you pay them upfront, they tell you when to put them out, and they pick them up, but it's not cheap.
And we did find out Goodwill would take some things.
I think Goodwill's getting out of the business, because so many people are dropping off the big, old, clunky monitors, and there's nowhere, there's nowhere for them to go with them.
Yep.
Because they don't really work well. Um, yeah, I'd heard Best Buy, I never got out there.
Yeah.
Gave you like a gift card to turn them in, but I don't know that that's true anymore, so.
Not for the old big TVs, things like that, that, just nobody wants them anymore, so, I just, I-
So you want it on, or?
I'd like to have something on there. Maybe we can discuss if there's an opportunity for us to work with the state.
Some kind of electronic recycling.
Something for our community.
Now, did you say you heard or saw something?
Yeah, I was reading online about it, and honestly, it was, I didn't write down many notes on it, but it's the recycling program for the state, and then you can go in there and find where, where in your community or area that you live in that you can take and recycle things, and, um, the areas, for our area here showed the communities, the cities, like Watertown, and, um, I, I can't remember, there was four, four locations around our area that we could take stuff to, but everyone said you had to be a citizen of this city, or this city, or that, or-
They weren't countywide.
They weren't countywide. There's, there's nothing countywide for, for us to go to, except for John's recycling to call him. So, we really don't have anything in this area for our citizens to use.
So, future?
Future.
That's on, all right. Anything else? And Vicky, when's your last date?
Two weeks from today, so I'll be at your next meeting.
You will be at the next one?
Mm-hmm.
But I won't say anything. All right, anything else? And we're adjourned.